...vocation by Reverend Sandy Spalding and stay rising for the President of Legion.
God, our Creator of all there is and ever shall be, we are here thanking you for all the blessings that you bestow on our city. We ask you to guide our council and mayor and all the workers in the city with the highest good of our residents. We ask you to bless us and our country. For this we are thankful. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Handel.
Mayor Dale Massid.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Sorrell.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Dittmer.
Here.
Councilman Richard Bloom.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have Claudia Smith as Speaker.
Claudia Smith, seven three three five, Candlelight Court. Congratulations to Councilman Rowe and to Councilman Bloom. Sorry, almost forgot.
Thank you.
Um, I was asked if I was upset about losing, and I wasn't. I was sad, but I'll tell you what my concern is now. I think, and I could be wrong, that almost everyone up there either lives on the water or you live on the west side of Port Ritchie. There is an east side, and I am concerned that we will no longer be represented and we will be pushed aside. We have our problems over there, too, and I would ask that you please keep this in mind and you listen to any citizens that you hear from and look at our problems and not push us aside. If you do, Claudia will be here, and I will be telling you what you're doing wrong. And I will say it nicely, but I will say it firmly, because if I have to, I'll bring other people with me. So, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much. Leonard Lord.
Leonard Lord, I pastor. And saying congratulations, gentlemen, on the wins, and it's good to keep you accountable and a little bit difficult, right Claudia? Just wanted to remind everybody of the National Day of Prayer. You got an invite. It's joy when y'all come out and we personally introduce you and pray for you as commissioners and sheriffs, ones come out. That will be third of May, a week from Thursday, over at the government center off a little rep there around the Black Bowl out front, and that'll be twelve to one o'clock. So, if you could, it would be great. This year the theme is from Ephesians four three, endeavoring for the union spirit, keep the union spirit in the bond of things that it says, cause there's one Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God the Father, the Father, and the Son, and through us all. So. Grace coming from him. So, just want to invite you there and any way we can help and thank you. And sir, we will be getting prayers. We need two times a week to pray for our officials. We'll be getting mentioned by name as Terry and the rest of them. So, Lord bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Let's bring it to the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I have scheduled for this meeting is to introduce two individuals under the recommendation of Councilwoman Sorrell, so the general public can get to know these two individuals who are doing, in my opinion, a yeoman's job. And they are our code enforcement officers. We will, I will be coming to counsel very, very shortly with a draft of our minimum housing standards and a matching or parallel grant program for council's input advice so that we can finalize our minimum housing standards codes for the city and to release a program to aid individuals with respect to that. So, I would like to introduce two individuals. If you would please stand up and come on forward, turn around so that our citizens may be able to see you. It is Ms. Liz Nichols and Mr. Alec, Alex Ramisovich. They're our co, they're our code enforcement officers. They are here to help us maintain the kind of city that we would like for it to be. They are not Avengers. They, they are help helpers, and they'll be more than happy to sit and talk with any individual concerning any issue on their property. So, just want to introduce these two individuals and so that our public knows them, and they could be contacted at our building department. Liz Nichols and Alex Ramisovich.
Do you guys have cards? Cause I have not complaints by me all the time. Could I have one?
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring two. That's all that I have for this meeting, Mayor.
All right. Bring it to the council. Any thoughts, feelings?
Well, of course, I'd like to welcome our newest member, Councilman Bloom, and also great having Terry back with us again. So, we appreciate it, gentlemen.
Let's stack that.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I know you're good. Do you have anything to say?
Oh, well, I can make up something if you want me to.
Terry?
I'm good. I'd like to say it's a real pleasure being here and working with the rest of the council folks, town attorney, town manager, and I look forward to serving the public in their best interest. Thank you.
Okay, guys, we've got, bring up one thing. If the council would, I'll be bringing some things about smart meters, the little Duke Energy things that blast radiation out. Take a look at it on YouTube, and so you'll be a little familiar when I get past Jim. With that.
Consent agenda.
And we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Want to make a motion? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimous. Is this every month?
Yes, sir. Every meeting. The consent agenda basically is...
No, I'm gonna let these two charge it.
Basically, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a public hearing, rezoning to R2 to three, to C3, and I think Mr. Matthew will take that.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have a couple of councils, at least, um, three council members probably at least have done this before, I'll be a little more wordy than I usually am. This is a quasi judicial hearing. It's a rezoning matter. As you can see from the documents, we have an applicant that desires to go from an R2 zone to a commercial three zone. I have some comments about the substance and the process. So, into our, our code, all proposals for rezoning is sent to the planning and zoning board for review and recommendation. As part of our city code and process, the planning and zoning board holds a public hearing, which they have done. Their decision is on the second page of this section. Okay? They approved it by three to two vote with one proviso, which I'll explain in a minute. Planning and zoning board is instructed to utilize...
I'm sorry.
The planning and zoning, this is important. The planning and zoning board was instructed to utilize the criteria set forth in the code which is in front of you. So, behind the resolution, you see criterion standards to be considered in review of application for zoning amendments. These are the criteria you must employ. It's the same criteria that the planning and zoning board used. The planning and zoning board was to recommend the applicant for rezoning with the condition, the condition is there. In addition, set forth before you the conditions upon which can be set by you, it's a condition of approval. Okay? So, now when you go to the next page, you see conditions which may be imposed on rezoning applicants. Obviously, if you're gonna impose any of these, you wouldn't inquire of the applicant whether they would want to do that. You don't want to impose a condition they don't want to do, okay, and force it upon them. Now, when you look down at these, the most important one, when I say important, the one you probably will look at the most is the last one, E, specific uses. Not that you couldn't do the others, but they're probably not going to apply today, such as giving an easement across the property and things like that. Specific uses, okay? Do you want to limit the applicant to certain uses within the C3 zoning district? If you don't, then they could do anything. Now, remember that when someone comes in for rezoning, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned forever. Okay? So, you can ask all the questions, what this person's gonna do. They could sell it tomorrow and somebody else could do something. So, if you want to put any restriction on that, that's up to you.
Good.
Terms of the process here today, okay, the applic, I'm sorry?
Please.
Yeah, go ahead, sir, please.
You said forever. It cannot be rezoned backwards?
It could be rezoned backwards. Somebody'd have to make an application, but city council can't undo it.
Okay.
Okay? So, if you said, hey, look, we'll give you, we move to, you know, let you have C3 zoning with no provisos, conditions, okay? Well, then, any, they could tell you what they're gonna do, but anybody else could do anything. So, if you want to...
If they sell it, they can be rezoned, okay?
When you say rezoned, they wouldn't have to rezon it. I'm obviously not making my point. If you don't put conditions on the rezoning, it will be left to anything anybody ever wants to do in C3 there, this applicant or anybody for the next hundred years. Okay? So, there's a whole list of things in C3. All right? So, if you say, okay, and you may want to do that. Right now, the recommendation of the planning and zoning board is that we rezone to C3 with the condition that it can only be used for light industry establishment involving product assembly, storage, or distribution. Okay? No manufacturing, and this must be conducted within a completely enclosed building. Okay? So, they can do product assembly in there. They can store things in there. It can distribute things in there. Okay? As long as it's done inside. That was the proviso under the C3. The application and staff documents are in front of you. So, the rest of the package beyond these conditions that I just shown you is the file. Okay? They're both the applicant's file and other documents provided by staff. They are now part of the record. Any additional documents offered by any interested party, including the applicant, may be offered. So, they may offer you additional documents. I don't know. You will then, they'll be considered part of the record. Evidence which is immaterial, irrelevant, irrelevant or unduly repetitious may be excluded by the council. So, if somebody wants to hand in additional documents, you'll look at it by that standard. It'll be up to you whether to accept that documents. If so, they become part of the permanent file. The way this process is gonna go is staff will first offer their recommendation. We'll probably hear from Mr. Muse. Next, the applicant will present their case. They may, he'll tell you about it. They may offer other documents. They may not. They can call any witnesses they want. The applicant, then can they question staff on their recommendation. Council after that can inquire of the applicant. You can ask any questions you want of the applicant. Then, any and all interested parties here may speak. They'll all be sworn, and they're subject to inquiries by the council or the applicant. Council will then decide through a motion to accept or deny the recommendation of the planning and zoning board with or without conditions or additional conditions. If the recommendation is approved, an ordinance amending the zoning map and the rezoning will be prepared for two readings. Any questions about the process? And I'll, I'll help you with it, Mayor. Super. Well, Ms. Staff, that'd be the first question. You ready?
Yeah.
Go, Staff.
Jim, would you like to...
Yeah, oh, excuse me, I swear a bit.
If you'll be speaking tonight, please stand and raise your right hand, staff included. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, is Staff ready to make presentation? Mr. Muse?
Yeah, did you swear? Swear a bit now, that's okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
If you'd like, you can sit down, Bill.
Yeah, we have two microphones here.
Right there, big and...
Yeah. Now? That's better.
May I take a moment out of this to say something? Council, I'd like to introduce another member of my staff, Veronica Hanson, who's our administrative... With her, you've met four of my five staff people. The only person missing is Joanne, who's our permanent administrator. We've been working for the past year to clean up a lot of issues and things in the code and the city and our, our board that people have.
Yeah, that microphone's not on.
Yeah, it's on. It's just having issues.
We need to create a record. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Sound like a commercial. As I was gonna say, our, our, our staff has been working for a year, working to clean up things, do some things around the city with our code compliance people. We, we work every single day at working at resolving issues. Everyone calls in with something we, on daily, we have something we have to take care of. Our, Joanne has issued four hundred and sixty-six building permits since a year ago. Stunning. Okay. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll hold it like this. Um, we, we've worked with, we battled with contractors, developers, homeowners, stream, to streamline the process. One of our applications that, when I first came here, said that, that when an applicant filled out the application for a permit, he was supposed to submit six copies of a site plan approved by the city of Crystal River. You know, that's a little strange. Got that changed. But we'll also be starting, as Mr. Lupo had said, the minimum housing ordinance a few days, a few weeks from now, whenever we have this, and we, we, we need all the help we can do, get to make this a special place that it is. All right. Back to the issues at hand. One of the things that, when we start looking at a zoning process that we do is we go through and try to evaluate it from a standpoint of common planning ordinances. Okay? Is this, is this issue a rezon, will, if this issue is rezoned, will it be a catalyst for the future development? Obviously not. If this issue is, if this rezoning is approved, will it, will it help, appreciate to improve the vision of the neighborhood? Probably not. Will the rezoned case revitalize or destruct the neighborhood? I don't think it would destruct it, but I'm certainly not sure it will revitalize it. With regards to the, hang on a second, let me read my writing. Anyway. "When we, when we view the zoning, we had to consider the most appropriate land use throughout the city for the preserve and increase amenities and preserve, enhance the development of the natural, scenic, and aesthetic quality of our community. To encourage the most rational land use for protection of the residential neighborhood from incompatible activity. The primary intent of a zoning is to assure the land conforms with the master plan and hopefully, in our case, prohibit spot zoning." Let me read to you the definition of spot zoning. You're with me a second.
Not hearing you that well.
Still, still can't hear me? I'm gonna continue on anyways. Spot zoning is the, the application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a larger zone area where the rezoning is, is usually at odds with the city's master plan or current zoning restrictions. And this is exactly what we have here. I'd like to read something else to you. We have three residential zones here, R1, R2, and R3. R1 is residential, which is you all live in. R2 is duplexes, and R3 is the multifamily, like out at the beach. All three of these zones, zonings in our, our code, have the very same purpose in mind. I want to read that to you, cause they're literally identical in all three of the, of the codes. "The purpose of the R1 single-family residential zoning district shall be to locate and establish areas within the city which are deemed to be suitable, suited for development and maintenance of low-density residential living of an urban character and designate those uses and services deemed appropriate for location and development within said zoning district, and to establish such development standards and provisions that are not, are necessary to ensure proper development in a low-density residential environment." That's, that's for the three. Residential zoning. This rezoning, or the staff's opinion, is, is encroaches upon a residential zone. It will increase traffic. Property values will not increase, has been said. I don't think there's a si, single si, resident in the city of Port Ritchie that has increased in value because it's next to a commercial area. That, we, we just discl, disclude that altogether. There's already been encroaching on the R2, R1 zoning, and we can't address that. It's just simply wrong. There's several parcels there that have been done. We, they were done some years ago, and we just can't do anything about that. History has shown us that future developers, that in the future, developers will sell their property, and there's no guarantee, as we had said, that the development will remain the way it is today, even though someone may guarantee it today. Five years from now, it'll, it'll be totally different. I have some additional photographs, additional photographs I'd like to submit if it's possible.
Sure, you go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Your first rule on the photographs before you accept, your group... Your first rule on the photographs before you accept them, you need to put a basis on and say why he wants them. You'll decide whether they are material, relevant.
Three, two votes.
So, you're gonna tell him about it, and then he's gonna rule on what you want to make it evidence. Thank you.
In my first judge, these appear to be...
He didn't know anything about it yet. He's gotta tell you. Are you ready?
I'm gonna accept.
You back with me? He can't accept it. He has a sentence about that. Yeah, I, I...
You told me to...
No, I'm saying, he's gonna tell you about it, and then you decide.
Okay.
The, the reason I'm presenting these is so you can see the residential character in that neighborhood. And at the end, we're showing some of the non-residential areas that we don't want to happen in a residential area. First photograph, of course, oh, I'm sorry, I, do I need to ask her approval first? Or they accept them or not? Or do I go ahead and explain? No, you can explain them first, and, and when you're done, you can ask whether they accept them. First photograph, number one, they are numbered, by the way. Number one clearly shows a residential area. Some kids are waiting for the school bus, a mother there. Second photograph shows a school bus picking up the children. Third photograph shows a school bus going through, clearly, clearly residential area. Fourth photograph shows a decent little residence. Fifth one shows also two. These are, these are clean little residences. There's nothing wrong with them. The sixth one, did I skip one?
Maybe four.
Four, five, all right. The six photograph shows what can and will happen with 3C zoning. Someone had mentioned, once this is zoned and once it's approved, there's not one thing we can do about it, and this is exactly what we have, this type thing here. The seventh is the same thing. We have equipment out front. Eight is the same thing. We have equipment out front. Nine is, happens to be a yard where diesel engines are worked on. We could have that too in 3C zoning. We, no one could stop it. Um, I'll stop at that with the photographs. Do we accept them or not?
I, I think these are pertinent. We'll accept them.
All right, thank you. Council, we've shown through our due diligence that this rezoning from R2 to C3 is not a good idea for this neighborhood. You're the gatekeepers of the future of this beautiful little city. The rezoning is not about economic gain. It's not about... Second, hang on a second, I lost my reading. It's not about economic gain. It is not because we tend to look down our nose on, on the residents of Sun Glow and this residence. It's not about crime. It's about basic fundamentals of zoning and the protection of the residential neighborhood. We would not want to commit this to any other residential neighborhood in the city, so we therefore ask for denial and allow us as the planning and zoning department of the Development Services to continue the work we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
You pull the, you can ask, you, you get a chance to ask him a question, so you pull the applicant.
Okay. Would the applicant please step forward, Johnny?
Hello, my name is John St. Martin. I live at five four one nine Miles Boulevard. Own properties straight across the street at five four one eight Miles Boulevard. Own eighty-one twenty-four Washington Street in Port Ritchie, eighty-one twenty Washington Street in Port Ritchie. I own fifty-seven forty-four Sun Glow Avenue, the street in question. I own fifty-eight hundred Sun Glow Avenue, the street in question. Both of those houses, but my current office location at eighty-one twenty-four and eighty-one twenty Washington Street. Been there approximately twenty years, owned the houses for over two. Everything I've ever bought and everything I've ever done in this city has, has been nothing but an improvement. And to rebut with what he's saying, I would like to submit for your approval or be looked at, is some, some...
Mr. St. Mark, could you place upon the record your relationship to the applicant to RJ, please?
All right. So, I am the president of Two RJ Investments Incorporated. Apologize. I'm the president. Our vice president is here, and some of our other people are here as well. I would like to show some preliminary renderings. They are probably about eighty percent accurate. They are gonna be very, very close to this. I'm working with a civil engineer. I've already invested, not just in the property, but quite a bit of money on the engineering and the drawings and what, what we have planned for it. There's a lot of things that he just said. He, he's calling it spot zoning. I would vehemently say it's the other way around. In fact, that the resident is the spot, residential is the spot zoning and not the commercial. He's showing you pictures, and we can start right there. His pictures, we'll use them as an example. Go to number seven. That's my business currently. What he's done is he's taken a picture of when my fence is open. There is a six-foot privacy fence. You cannot see that equipment during the day. That is the backside of my building. He does not show the front side of my building, which is absolutely gorgeous. Palm trees, beautiful lawn, well manned, well landscaped, completely taken care of. I don't know how many of y'all have driven by it or know where my business is, but it is well taken care of. I own the two houses directly behind it, and I rent them as residential. Okay? They were dumps when I bought them. They were complete and utter dumps. They, they were beyond good, and I did nothing but fix them up, pulled permits, did everything, and, and they're good quality houses on Sun Glow Avenue. Okay? So, where he's talking about, if you go back to page, so that takes care of seven. There's a six-foot fence. It's, the gate is open right there. So, you, you're, you're looking in at all that, that air conditioner, and I'm, and I, it does not look attractive. But you'll see my two dumpsters. You'll see all that in there. That is all behind the fence. Okay? There's a six-foot privacy fence there. He's not showing you that. He's only showing you the open. There was a time, the fence was down after the last hurricane, almost forty foot of the section of the fence had blown down. It has all been replaced, and it's brand new, back to where it was before. Okay? If you look at page eight, that is more air conditioning. I believe that is progressive air systems. That is the street directly behind Sun Glow.
The street is...
Dashar Court. It is exactly what I'm trying to do. The same thing that is already there. Metal buildings, one after the other, down the street. If you look at where, what I want to submit to you, and you look at it, where it lies on Sun Glow, first of all, it's three addresses there, and I didn't even list those. One of them is a Leo Kid address. Let's be very clear. Three quarters of an acre of that is on Leo Kid. There is not one residential house on Leo Kid, not one. There are some residential homes at the end, but they are zoned commercial and they are used as commercial at the end, the very south end of Leo Kid. So, if you go from nineteen to the entire end, it is all commercial, C3 or higher. Okay? So, I, I argue the fact that he, you know, I, I respect him, but I argue the fact that you would call that spot zoning. I, I would vehemently argue that. I, I just, it kinda upsets me. Directly across the street on Sun Glow from, from the Leo Kid address that I'm talking about, that first... that first three-quarters of an acre, because this is 1.6 acres we're talking about, that is owned by Duke Energy. So that's not residential either. That's where the substation is and all that property is right there, that's Duke Energy. So that's halfway down our property already, straight across the street is Duke Energy. Everything behind it is commercial. Everything across the street on Leo Kid is commercial, okay? He's making a case like this is like a happy homesville, it's not, people. I've got, I didn't want to do this, but I'm gonna tell you right now, we had two shootings in the last three weeks alone on that street. This is not a happy home area. They, I'm not gonna say that they're bad neighbors or they're bad people, they're not, there's a lot of good people on there. But let me tell you something. We had over six or seven shots fired just last week, on the 12th, I'm sorry, on the 12th of this month, three days prior to that, shooting at the same place. I believe some of the owner of the property across the street is gonna be here to argue that it's gonna downgrade his property value. It's not gonna downgrade it, that property value is down and it's gonna stay down. Until they change the tenants and how they fix it up and do it, it's never gonna change. And it will never, ever affect what we want to do at our place. We're talking about a well-landscaped, well-nice building fenced in, we're not, I see the pictures there, there's nothing I'd ever own that would look like that, that's not gonna happen. I'm moving my office to the Leo Kid address. I have outgrown Washington Street, and I need more space. I invested heavily in this. I mean, a good portion of my life savings are in this, and this has to work. And I'm telling you, it will work, it is, it's going to be nice. He's going to talk about the bus stop, and kids going down it. I should've taken a video, I had no idea I was gonna get this much opposition. There is truck after truck, that is a cut-through. Because Pine Hill is so busy, Leo Kid is a cut-through, I mean, Sun Glow is a cut-through. Everybody cuts through there, there's trucks going, it says no trucks, well, trust me, there's trucks already there. It's happening every day, okay? Deliveries every day. I have semis that come in, they usually come in from Washington Street, but we're talking about trucks that are gonna come in, two or three deliveries a day, they're gonna come in, they're gonna back in, they're gonna deliver their stuff, and they're gonna leave, you know? And sometimes we don't even get deliveries. My point is, is that this is not spot zoning, I'm just gonna go back to that one more time, it's not. When you have the exact same thing directly behind it, and when you go down Leo Kid and you turn down any one of those streets on Leo Kids, there is only two that has residential. That one and Siesta, Sun Glow and Siesta. And if you look at the years those houses were built and when that was done, it looks like the city thought about doing residential and it didn't work. They built Leo Kid and they said, "Let's go commercial," and that's exactly what they did. That's exactly what they did. Every single street down Leo Kid is commercial. Siesta Lane, all those, when you turn left off of them, turn right off of them, Dashar Court, all those are commercial buildings. The same thing that I'm proposing now. They'll be brand new, well-built, two-code, with asphalt parking, layouts and everything. So again, I would ask that I could submit this for your looking at, and you decide whether or not you want to approve to look at them?
Bring them up, please.
And I will say one more time that these aren't the actual final, but it is darn close, okay?
Thank you.
We'll share.
All right, so just briefly, real quick, that's the 7,000 square foot, this is Leo Kid, and then Sun Glow comes down, and there's two more metal buildings here with one driveway. So you got two driveways off of Sun Glow and one off of Leo Kid.
Why don't you do that for the council?
You can grab the microphone.
Just do one and stand up.
It's on the record, it's up to you, Dale, but you can bring them up.
Right, just stand about right, given the council all sees this.
So when you're looking at it, you see Leo Kid, the road?
Yes.
Okay, so that one driveway would be the entrance into my main part of air prompt, that would be the front, the facade. And then these sides would be...
I was gonna, I wanted to...
Take mine.
Kinda hold it up so you can...
I think it was a better one, it was right there. So I'm proposing a 7,000 square foot building on three-quarters of an acre, a little over three-quarters of an acre. And then the other two are 5,000 square foot buildings, with the one driveway going in and the two garage doors on them, much like you just see on Dashar Court. Again, there's gonna be landscaping across the fronts and the roads, the engineering shows drainage, everything is just the way it should be. And if you're looking at it now that we're talking about it, now that you see it, you see the dark shedded area where the proposed 70 by 100 building is, all that property straight across the street is Duke Energy. All the property behind it is that big metal building that's already there. All the property across the street from Leo Kid, once again, is all commercial buildings. There is no residential abutting that property whatsoever. Now, I believe they're gonna show pictures, I saw pictures of a school bus, and that's great, but I will, the first thing I'm gonna ask is, because I've never seen them actually stop on Sun Glow, it just drives through Sun Glow, it also uses the road as a cut-through. It's not where they pick the kids up. I believe they pick them up on Leo Kid over at Gorman, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong, but every time I've ever seen them, they stop on, the stop is on Leo Kid, not on Sun Glow. And, let me look. Yeah, here we go. So if the property stays vacant, if you disapprove this, it's gonna sit there for another 30 years, because nobody in their right mind is gonna put multifamily apartments there. Nobody's gonna do it. Nobody's been beaten down the door to do that. Only people that have been beaten down the door is the people that wanna rezone it to commercial. It's just gonna sit there vacant, and I'm gonna, you know, I'll be losing the money. It is what it is. But there's no way somebody's going to buy that and put multifamily on there, it isn't gonna happen, not with the record of what they got going on. And I'm just gonna go over this one more time, and then I'm gonna wrap it up, okay? This, I got this from the police department, okay? This is from January 1st of 2017 to now, okay? And you guys are, it's all public record. We had two shootings, a disturbance, prowler, a warrant arrest, battery, grand theft, burglary auto, civil matter, suspicious incident. These are just some, guys, I'm just passing the little weenie stuff, I'm just going right to the other stuff. Battery again, child abuse, Baker Act, assist other agency arrest, warrant arrest, warrant arrest, burglary, domestic, domestic, battery, warrant, disturbance, domestic. Guys, there's over 150, this is, I believe the police are on this road as much as they are at Walmart, okay? I'm just making a point here. So to make it sound like a homey, wonderful neighborhood, maybe it could be better in time, but putting our property there isn't gonna change it for the good or the worst either way, okay? And to call it spot zoning, it drives me crazy. It is, that is not the best definition of spot zoning. It is not, because it's commercial all around it. The only spots that it would be is the very far end, you'd have two apartments next to it, and you'd have one duplex across from it. So I think I've made my point. I'm planning on investing and doing a nice job, I'm gonna be there a long time, this is not something I'm flipping. I need to be here, all right? Thank you.
Mr. St. Martin, do you desire to ask any questions of staff?
Yeah, can I do that after, after everybody's spoken?
You can do it later if you want, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have some questions, for sure.
Do you have other witnesses or other evidence you want to present at this time? They could speak just in the general public, but if you want to call them now, you have that right there.
Who's that?
If you have other witnesses that...
Not, I can't do that after, right?
Well, you're not gonna be able to call them afterwards, the mayor is gonna say, "Does anyone want to speak?" So they can come up, as part of your case, do you want to put on any witnesses?
I may, in fact, ask my brother's...
This is your chance to...
Ron St. Martin.
You gonna call him, or bring him up now?
Do you have anything to say right now?
I don't have much to answer to that right now.
Okay, okay, well, he'll announce later.
He said at the moment.
If you don't have any questions, do you have any counsel, any questions?
Any questions from the council?
You could call him later, whatever.
I think we'll be talking to him later.
Yeah, you can bring him back up.
Is this his case in chief?
That's his case in chief right now, yeah, he's resting.
There was one thing I wanted to say. I would specifically ask the two new council members...
To answer your question, Dr. Bloom, there will be it open to the public, anyone who wants to put in evidence, you can use that as part of the case in chief, or the other side.
I would ask the two council members, being so recent and new, are you aware, have you driven by, are you any, what, familiar with what's going on here right now?
You can ask questions for the council.
To the two newest council members, I'm directing this to the two...
I think...
Yeah, they're not here to answer questions, you could say that as a hypothetical question if they want to answer it, the other side will...
Okay, all right. Is anybody familiar with this piece of property?
I'm not exactly new, and yes, I have been, and have completely walked the property and the neighborhood.
All right, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Jim, for the record, where his photos entered into evidence, was, they're not even on them?
He hasn't voted on it yet.
Okay.
Are you accepting, the photos are into evidence, are you accepting his plans?
Yes, but did he, do we have it all? Johnny, I think you took mine.
What was it? The plans you wanted to put in the evidence, Mr. St. Martin? We just need one of them.
Okay. And I want to apologize to the public, I've not been to judge before, so I'm getting problems.
You're doing a good job. You're not a party to this, so... At this point in time, what you would ask is, for any interested parties from the previous hearing, I think that gentleman seated over there is an interested party, and then you'll ask for the general public to come up, but why don't you call him up?
All right, interested parties, come, state your name, address.
Thank you, councilman. My name is Andre Cash, I live at 3321 Ashmont Drive, Lender Lakes. I own four duplexes at 5914 to 5934, right across from subject property. As I previously stated before, I have strong Ukrainian accent, so if somebody doesn't understand, please stop me, I'll repeat myself. We bought the property, four duplexes total, and eight residential units in March 2017. And the developer is absolutely correct, it was in pretty bad shape, and it's taken us some time to bring it to the standard where we would like to be. We evicted multiple tenants, there were problems, there were crime shootings. Right now, we're down to one legacy tenant. The most recent criminal activity that occurred was at unit 5914. I received call from Officer Howard, we opened the facilities for him, fully cooperated with his investigation, posted no trespass notice on the door, that individual is out. And right now, majority of our tenants are families, many of them with children, some of them are here today, two families that rent from us. I do appreciate the business motive of the developer to create something good and economically feasible, but I'm very concerned that it's a quiet residential street. And my tenants, the families that live there, would like to continue to live on a quiet residential street. And when they come out to put their kids on the school bus, which does stop at Sun Glow, they would rather not look at residential, at industrial buildings. And when their kids run, they would feel safer if there are no major commercial activity across. With that said, if they would like to add anything?
Does council have any questions?
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the applicant?
I have, I have, okay, sir.
Thank you.
No, I want to ask a question.
Sure.
Do you have any ideas of increasing the residential neighborhood in that area? Or do you just want to keep this residential?
Would I would like to increase residential...
Do you have plans to increase this neighborhood?
I would like to buy more residential units, sure, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question as well. 5934, that's one of your units?
Yes, correct.
And that currently does sit next to a commercially zone? Is your property?
I believe so, that's Duke Energy parcel, right?
So you, right now, your property is next to commercial property?
Commercial, but not commercial use, commercial zone, it's vacant with palm tree zone.
And right behind that is the rest of Duke Energy's property?
Correct, commercial zone, but it's pretty much vacant and see-through.
Okay, and then at the end of Sun Glow, across the street of Leo Kid, that's again commercial property? This is commercial? Directly across from Sun Glow?
I believe...
From Sun Glow, crossing Leo Kid, that property is also commercial property?
On the corner, you're referring to northwest corner of Sun Glow and Leo Kid?
Sun Glow and Leo Kid, directly across Leo Kid. That's the east side, yeah.
Yes, yes, it is commercial, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Would the public like to speak? Any other interested parties first?
He gets the call.
Oh, go ahead, call who you would like.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Cologne, I live in 5932 Sun Glow Avenue, and I live there with two of my kids and my husband. And we've been living there for almost a year, it's been quiet, and we like it there. And I have my two kids, of course, they pick, the bus driver picks them up and drops them off right on Sun Glow, across right up our building. And I think it's a bad idea, I'm just gonna get straight to the point, it's a bad idea for us to, for like, commercial stuff to happen there, because of the kids running back and forth, and then the buses and stuff, I just want to keep my kids safe, so, you know? And other than that, shooting and that stuff is everywhere, you know? And I've been seeing a progress too, that he's been fixing and kicking out the bad stuff, and let me just say, I like it there, I want to stay there with my kids, and I want to keep it safe, you know?
Thank you very much. Anyone?
Yeah, you have questions?
Any questions from the council?
Can I direct a question to the police department?
The police department?
Yeah.
Between witnesses, could you have she sits down?
So you consider the neighborhood going, getting much better?
Yeah, it's been getting a lot better. I mean, ever since I've lived there, it's been since like, November of last year, it's been quiet. And I've, I lived in Hudson, and that was horrible where I was at. And all I've, you know, all I've seen in that street was that, you know, things happen, but it happens everywhere. The shootings, the domestic violence, all that stuff is everywhere, you know? And, but having the buses go through there, and my kids to have the bus stop on Sun Glow, it's not. Not a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, did you ask a question?
Okay, you can be seated, ma'am.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
How many other children are in the area that your children play with?
There are two more down to me, and then there's two next to me, so there's like I can't really count them, because there's also...
Just approximately.
I see like, 10, 15.
That live there on Sun Glow in those homes?
Yeah, and that walks to the bus stop on Sun Glow, they'd be walking back and forth on Sun Glow and stuff, yeah, there's a lot of kids.
You can be seated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselor, did you ask a question?
I have a question for Captain. As a proportion, like, they're describing a proportion of calls to this area, is it higher than surrounding areas, or is it just, like she said, that's like, normal? For me, that's not normal. So I just wanted to know what that is.
Indeed, Sun Glow Avenue over the years has had a higher activity of call level. Compared to what it was in prior years, it has decreased, but it is typically a little bit more of a higher level activity. But it is, it is typically a little bit more of a higher level activity than other areas.
Okay.
Certainly not normal for the city of Port Ritchie. I would say increased than, than comparative to any given street in general. Thank you, Captain.
See if he has any other witnesses.
Other witnesses.
I just got a question. If he sits down, you don't tell him to be quiet?
Yes.
And ask him if he has any other witnesses.
Your other witnesses, yes.
My name is Justinia Valentine, and I live at five-nine-two-eight Sun Glow Ave. And I'm going to go against the surveyor and say that we do not need any more industrial property, because I feel it's more better without it, like, it's quiet, besides, you know, whatever was said. But I've been there for only a month, and we're about to have a baby. I live with my boyfriend Jamal Mota over there. And it's been quiet, like, it's probably like, the quietest it's been like, where I have lived, and I grew up kind of rough, you know? So I'm just going to say that I don't think we need any more industrial property, especially across from where we live.
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Counsel have any questions? He might be seated. Other witnesses? Okay. Now, that's John.
Now you're, I can call for anybody here that has an official testimony or has anybody.
General public, any one want to speak? Mr. Todd.
Five-one-one-three Mallett Drive. I think you guys ought to really consider hard of letting this gentleman have that. Nothing against him, folks, but here's the thing is, trying to get minimum housing standards, clean the town up. All of our homes are an investment, but this man's proposing, he's imposing more tax revenue that the city can use, and improvements. And the gentleman that owns that property, if that gentleman does what he says he's going to do, it's going to raise the value of the properties up. My honest opinion, it's a no-brainer. When people are willing to come into this city, keep their properties right, maintain them, and do what they say they're going to do, to me, it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Next, general public, Claudia. Hold on, Claudia, let me, let me call, Mr. St. Martin.
Ron St. Martin, five-six-two-nine Lorenzen Road, Port Ritchie. I just question the integrity of how long these people are going to be here, they're tenants. This gentleman proposing this has been here over twenty-five years in this city, the business has been there for over seventeen years. He doesn't intend on going anywhere, and how, you know, most rentals, I'm not going to say all, but they're not making a lifelong commitment here. This gentleman is, that's all.
Thank you. Claudia.
Claudia Smith, seven-three-three-five Candlelight Court. Well, I live on the east side, so here I am. Candlelight Court has about thirty houses, and we have two cars per house, that's sixty cars. We have FedEx, we have UPS, multiple times. We have no sidewalks, and we have a lot of children. I'm a mother, so if I felt like the children were not being safe, because there's a lot of activity, a lot of traffic, I would be the first one to say this is wrong. But you have a gentleman that has lived in Port Ritchie and invested in Port Ritchie for years, that wants to take a piece of property and develop it. Nothing against these people, but they may be here a year, they may be here six months, he may decide to flip that property in a year. And then that, that acreage is going to continue to sit there empty for thirty years. You can't make a decision based on a few children going to a bus stop. Put speed bumps, put slow down, there are children, do that sort of thing, make that investment. Not deny a long-term resident and business owner to develop a piece of property that's been sitting for thirty years. So the question is, are we open for business, or are we not?
Anyone else want to speak to this?
Leonard Lord, eight-one-one-four Leo Kid Avenue, of course, I pastor right across the road, and, you know, I appreciate people vision for their land. I just had a question, and this isn't for or against, except a question. We've been in meetings with the sex shops that's come in, and I believe this man will do what he said, but I guess what hit me is when you said people will be doing what they want to down the road. I'm just asking, twenty, thirty, forty years, or something happens, is there a way, a liquor store could come in, or a sex shop, or lingerie, is, is that something that could be possible? If it is, could we nip that in the bud? Pasco County's got a mess now with the prostitution and pornography, with all that's going on, and the crimes that's going on. So just wanted to make sure that if this was zoned, and you said somebody else got it in their hands, could they do something like that that would really be destructive? I mean, trucks are one thing, pornography and drugs and sex shops are another thing to have in the city, so that's just my question.
Bill?
We have no control over what anybody does.
Does that include light residential like it was written? That said, it was written up as light residential, being for assembly, storage, those things? Isn't that in the perspective of? But it would have to be for that use though, correct? Well, that would follow the code enforcement if it wasn't.
Is it on now?
Jim, you?
Sorry.
Mr. Matthew.
Generally, the, as I was explaining, that's what I was trying to explain in the beginning. There's an application before you for C-three zoning. If you grant that application for C-three zoning, anything that's allowed under C-three zoning could be done at any time, okay, forever. You can put conditions on that and restrict its use.
Which is written up there.
Which is exactly what the planning and zoning board did. So this use is to be a rezoning to a C-three with a condition, proviso, call it what you like, that it can be a light industry establishment involving product assembly, storage or distribution, no manufacturing, when conducted within, completely within a building, so this would be three. That's the, that's the proviso and the restriction.
And that proviso would always go with that.
That would always be there, and it's going to be done by ordinance, it would be recorded against the future land use map, there'd be two ordinances. Yes, it can be done, it's the proper way to do it, it's the way we will do it if you desire to do that, okay? So you can restrict the use.
So even though it's C-three, we are restricting to a very narrow use of the property?
You can make it as narrow as want, as long as the applicant agrees to it, because you don't want to ram it down his throat and pass it, he doesn't want to do it, obviously. But, so you called him up, and obviously, he agreed to this, that they're planning and zoning, and they agreed to it, so that's the answer, it's perfectly legal, and it's routine.
Yeah, well, my, my thought is, is we know what generates criminal, criminal activity. It can be a legal business, but it still generates criminal activity and really degrades the family, so I don't know if there's something you could put in there that there would not be anything that would bring about any criminal activity. You know, businesses like that won't, that's just my concern, because people slipping in.
If we could, I would have that all over the city, we wouldn't have any criminal activity.
What's that now?
If we could do that, I would have it all over the city.
Well, but you know what I'm talking about, I mean pornography and drugs are really what motivates. Yeah, well, that's just my question, if that, I just heard him say that, you know, it could be switched into anything, so thank you.
Let's go on, okay, anyone else like to speak to this? General public, Mr. Johnny? Johnny can speak, yes. I guess if I'm judge, I'll do it my way.
My name is Charles Grant, I own several commercial pieces of property on Leo Kid, Pine Hill, and Clark Moody. And since I've bought them in the past few years, I've fixed all of them up. And I'm a partner with Johnny on this piece of property, so we're not intending on, you know, hurting anything with the neighborhood, we want to improve the city, and I've been here thirty-two years myself. And I could, I could tell you that in the past six months, however long Liz has been on with you, she's definitely an asset to your city, and she's cleaning up the city, and it's happening. And we want to invest in the city of Port Ritchie.
Okay, let me ask something, sir. Yeah, give your name and address.
One of my address is in Port Ritchie, or?
Where do you live?
I live in Newport Ritchie, four-three-two-four Reeves Road.
Okay, do you, are there any things you have thought of that might mitigate their fears of being somewhat more dangerous for children?
Well, I mean, I don't see anything dangerous going with the, with the storage, or the, the commercial three property, or the traffic, or anything like that. What I see dangerous is, you know, the shooting in the neighborhoods and everything, I surely wouldn't want my kids in that neighborhood if.
Right, but.
That crime rate was like that.
I think Mr. Muse said that it would increase traffic, what you're doing there, is that correct in your opinion?
I don't think it's going to increase the traffic any more than what you already have there.
Please. Sir, what is it actually, I might have missed this, but what is it actually you folks are planning to do in these structures? What, what type of business are you planning to operate out of them?
It's going to be inside storage, and, and one of them's going to be the air prompt, air conditioning. Moving down, he's, he's enlarging from the office he has down on Washington, and moving over to the building on Sun Glow.
So one of the buildings is going to be an office structure, is that correct?
No, office warehouse.
Oh, okay, and, and when you say storage, what are you going to be storing there?
Just air conditioning's there.
Okay.
Just like around the corner on the other streets, you know, light industrial there, or commercial.
Thank you very much.
On the third building, what were you planning on doing with it? Was it also going to be storage for the air conditioning business, or were you planning on renting it out?
I'm probably going to take the third building myself, just for storage.
So you'll probably make two storage buildings and one active business?
Yes.
So the active business is actually going to be on Leo Kid?
I believe it's on the corner of Leo Kid and Sun Glow, yes.
Is it facing Leo Kid? I know the one driveway is.
Direct those questions to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, he's Bill.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, anyone? Johnny, do you want to speak?
Yeah, those, those kind of questions you can ask me, because I'm the one that planned all this and, and did all that, so, um, yeah, my air conditioning company of twenty-four years is going to move to the Leo Kid location. Now, the facade in the front is going to face Leo Kid, but there will be garage doors facing Sun Glow. I have eleven vans, okay, let's be honest about it, I have eleven vans. They come in, and they get in in the morning, and then they go out and they go to work. But they're all cautious drivers, and they already drive down that road every single day. It's not going to change a thing if, if you say no, because we're still driving down that road every day. All those vehicles I have already used that road, okay? So, and the other two warehouses, he's probably using one for his toys and, and things that he wants to store, and the other one's for mine, so in the future, yeah, you know, maybe we'll lease them out, but we're responsible people, we're not going, there's going to be no anything like what he was talking about, and if we're going to talk about it, let's go back to that road again. I have used my cameras at Washington Street, Washington Street for the Port Ritchie Police Department on at least four different occasions for an assault, a hit and run. Just most recently was the shooting, they were trying to get angles and pictures of the car that was involved in the shooting. If you're worried about your kids, you should be worried about that, not worried about people running them over at the bus stop, because that doesn't happen almost very often at all, anywhere in the country, because people are very careful when it comes to kids, that's, that's a common sense thing, that's, you know, come on, everybody has common sense when it comes to kids, I mean, you're, you know, let's just, the other thing is, is half the people in those rentals, on the right side, one of those is under foreclosure right now. The one closest to mine is, there's two buildings there that are under foreclosure. And if it happens, I'm going to make a shot at it, I'm going to take a run at it, and I'm going to buy it, and I'll show you improvements. I'll, I'll get tenants in there, and I'll make it nice, okay?
My question was, so, so the activity would be taking place mainly on Leo Kid? You guys come in and go around the building, park, and then go back out, maybe on Leo Kids, since you're moving the office?
We can do that.
I'm just saying, this is probably what.
I'm not, I'm not making any promises, because the best place for our deliveries is going to be on Sun Glow. But guys, I'm already getting my deliveries on Sun Glow. Very picture, if you look at that picture where air prompt is, where that gate is open right now, that's where the semi's back in now, and give me my deliveries now. And guess what, they come from both directions, they're mostly coming from Dash or Court, from Progressive Air, they deliver their air conditioners there first, and then they come to me second, why, why am I second? Because Progressive Air has sixty trucks, sixty, at that location, right behind the building I'm talking about building. Sixty.
What I was trying to establish was is that your business in the one building would be the most active, because we get two storage units, which are probably not going to generate traffic.
Correct, now, but I'm not making any promises, I don't want to lie to anybody here, if, if we find a use for a business there, we're going to use it. But we're going to use common sense, we're not going to put idiots in there, and we're not going to do anything that's going to be detrimental to the area. It's going to be nice, okay? Landscaping, everything, and as far as the signs go, I'm all for it. Heck, if you want to put some children at play, signs up, I'll pay for them, let's do it.
That drives right into my next question. Were you living in, in those apartments, duplexes, with your family, who I know? Are there any mitigation factors you might offer them to make their lives better, make them more safe feeling? Were you in their situation?
I can assure them wholeheartedly that we're just running a business here, and we, we do not want to do anything to harm you guys, and it's not going to happen. Yes, sir.
We have to keep this in the record.
If he wants to ask a question, he has the microphone.
Come up and ask, identify yourself, ask.
He wants to ask me the question.
Yes.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
If you can stay at that microphone, you can come up to the table, that's why we have a second.
Identify yourself and ask your question. And your address.
You can pull it out of there, sir.
My name's Agarth Ozias, I live at fifty-nine thirty-two Sun Glow Avenue. By any chance, out of everything you've done showing, why are you showing pictures of how many of your trucks physically are going down the street of Sun Glow?
How come I don't have pictures of it?
I don't really see any, really any of your trucks, do I see more mailman trucks going down Sun Glow, any of your trucks at all?
Well, I don't know where, you know.
I get right at the end.
Twenty years I've been there, and they go up and down it every single day. Now that you know, if you've seen one of my vans, if you see my vans, you'll know, because now that, now that we've talked about it, you'll spot them, okay? I mean, I assure you, we're down them up and down it every day. So are the delivery trucks, and so is other delivery trucks for the other businesses at the end on the right. So there, I'm not the only business on that road, you know? There's a roofing company that's already on Sun Glow. And then there's the appliance company that's on, on Sun Glow and Washington, like, like my business as well. And I also rezoned the house behind me, that roofing company, that is.
Sir.
That is the epitome of, that is the epitome of spot zoning. The Sun Glow property where Tom Shell Plumbing was, and now is the roofing company, that is spot zoning, because it's surrounded by residential, except for the, except for the commercial behind it.
I forgot your name, sir, what is your opposition to this? Personally, for your kids, whatever.
I mean, my, my two kids, I mean, there's a reason why they don't go outside, because a lot of traffic already. Like, my kids are inside twenty-four seven, I don't let them outside.
So, not because of the shootings, I mean, seriously, you wouldn't be more concerned about a shooting?
Let's don't get into.
The cop physically himself had told me that, before the shootings, they're not even going up, they're not even on the street. The cop physically told me, I was, I had physically talked to the person that was doing the shootings. I told the cop, like I'm saying, the cop physically told me that before the shootings, nothing was that serious of happening for them to be, have to stay on the street. Now that the shooting have happened, the person don't even live there anymore.
But, so currently, you don't let your kids out of the house?
No, I mean, ahead of time, I don't, I don't really, I don't, I don't like, I don't, the way the, like, the world is, I don't like, just outside.
Right, but so, would, anything that Mr. Right, but, so, would anything that Mr. St. Martin is proposing make you want to keep your house, kids in the house more?
I mean, she's, uh, she's on her way forward.
Not, uh, no increased traffic, or?
I really don't have nothing against what you want, because everybody has their own dream, you know what I'm saying? I'm not gonna stop somebody from wanting to do what they wanna do, or have a, a reason to tell them that you can't do this, you can't, that's what you wanna do, that's your life, you know what I'm saying? I won't want anybody to tell me something I don't wanna do, or stop, you know what I'm saying?
What I'm trying to ask you is, is there a way we can mesh this together so that Mr. St. Martin can give you some, uh, reassurances that would make you more comfortable with your kids coming out of the house?
I mean, somebody mentioned speed bumps, that would help a lot, so, I mean, I don't really have, I'm not really good with, you know, with a lot of people.
Right, okay. Okay, I understand, so, please, John.
Speaking directly to the speed bumps, um, that's something we could look at later, but I, I see absolutely no reason for speed bumps, all right? We've already got FedEx and, and UPS down the road, up and down all day too. The post, post office, like he just said, he said it himself, he sees more post office trucks than he does my vans. The post office is right around the corner. Boom, he just said it, they're up and down it all day long, prime example. That street is not just residents on the street driving that street. There is plenty of cut-through businesses. You have to understand that that's a shortcut to get to nineteen. It is the quickest way, if you're going north on nineteen. It is also a good way to cut through to Lorenzen and get to the Grand Light at nineteen, to turn south. So, to say that it's gonna increase traffic, I would have to argue it vehemently, it's, it's not. It's gonna be no different than it is now, because I'm, I'm moving from one end of the street to the other end of the street. That's it.
Currently, looking from their own, in the way you're developing or to develop, it is just woods?
Yeah, it's all vacant land right now, and it's been sitting there vacant for many years. Um, I, I kinda feel bad for the people I bought it from, because, um, they knew that they could, that there's nobody in their right mind that's ever gonna build multifamily there. It's just not gonna happen, not.
And the, the scenery as they're facing, when, if you were to build, would be more aesthetic than what they're looking at now?
Um, well, no, I mean, it's always nice to look at plain old woods, but that's not gonna do you or the city any good, or me any good, because I've, I've made a, a solid purchase here, you know? Um, this is a wise plan, I, I, I truly believe in it. Um, my track record in this city speaks for itself, it really does. Um, I, I believe the lady there that spoke, I mean, it, it does speak for itself, between my house, my businesses, uh, the properties I've already bought, and, and what I intend on. Uh, guys, this isn't it for me, um, my partner and I are looking all over that city. We prefer, obviously, to go with stuff that's already commercial, but however, this, this is a beautiful piece of property for what we need to do, and everything around it is just like it. Behind, the stuff behind it, guys, I don't know if you drove by it, but that's, I'm back-to-back with the same thing that I'm putting in. And across the street, like, uh, Councilman Dittmer just said, uh, all the way across on Leo Kid, all the way down, up and down, that entire Leo Kid, that is all commercial. Okay, guys? Got any questions for me?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have any questions for Mr. St. John, but I, I would like to ask our building official a question.
Okay, you, you can be seated.
Can you do that? In, Bill, in the, um, two or three block radius of the site, how many residential properties would you say there were?
In a two or three block, I, I think that area, as they have said, is predominantly commercial. That's not the point. The point is, it was zoned residential years ago, and we are going into a spot zoning in there. The minute you go into any, encroach in any area that's an existing zoning, it is a spot zoning. I'm not gonna argue with someone who has a different definition, I do have the credentials to be saying that, but just because that is in ca- encased by a commercial area doesn't mean you continue the commercial into it, it is residential.
Well, and, and that's what I was just trying to, I, I, I understand it's residential, it's zone residential, it's residential, but I, I was just trying to get a feel for, within a two or three block radius of that entire area there, um, are, well, let me ask you this, one, are there residential structures?
I, I believe that there's...
Well, you showed some houses on your, in your pictures.
Yeah, I think, well, yes, those are...
On the far west side.
Those are on Sun Glow, there is a street to the north, I believe, that has some, but no, that's, that's, that area is predominantly commercial, there's no question about it. I'm not arguing about that. Commercial, commercial, but you do not go into a residential area for any reason. That is just fundamental planning.
When you say you don't go into a residential area for any reason, but just prior, your previous statement is it's, it's all commercial, basically?
No, no, the, the area is zoned, there is zone residential, we're talking about the residential, not all the commercial around it. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, I understand the zoning, uh, but, but, so it's predominantly commercial, but zone residential?
No, it is predominantly zoned commercial around it. The area we're talking about is, is residential, and there are three places that he happens to also belong on, that were converted to commercial some years ago, back in two thousand and seven, I believe, and two thousand and nine. Again, that was spot zoning done at that time. Uh, apparently, they didn't understand the spot zoning definition at that time, I, I guess.
Okay.
Does that help? I mean, I, it's not, again, it doesn't matter, doctor, whether the entire area is commercial or not. We have a, a residential district in that commercial area, and it has to be maintained. That is just fundamental planning. I wouldn't want it to happen to your neighborhood, nor anyone else's neighborhood.
I understand, thank you for your...
Bill, I assume we had a master plan?
Yes, sir.
Here. Are there multiple, um, lots, parcels that have been rezoned in this area?
Yes, there'd been three, I believe, uh, one, two, three, possibly four, one in the middle of the, of the neighborhood, which is the roofing company, and it's just wrong. The other is at the end of the street where the gentleman's business is. Again, it's in a residential area that was zoned commercial, should've never happened.
But we can't go back?
We can't go back to that.
It shouldn't have happened, but what happened? Can I, can I rebut that?
Please.
I built an addition at a very high expense for me, and I've now outgrown that addition, but I grew that, I built that on to the part I rezoned. So, it already abutted to it, everything behind it was all of Larry Beeler's property, all metal buildings, the buildings behind all the way up to Duke. That vacant land is commercial, somebody's gonna buy that, and they're gonna have metal buildings behind those apartments too, because it's already commercial, so...
We, we can't stop that.
Yeah, 'cause it's already commercial.
We can't stop someone building behind...
It's the same thing.
No, it's not the same thing.
It's gonna be the same-looking thing.
Then why don't you go up there and let's, let you take...
I'm here.
Point, counterpoint, just speak to the chair.
I understand his point of view, because he's, he's looking out for the, the city as the way it reads. He's looking at black and white, he's not looking at how it is already. I've been here a lot longer, and I'm telling you that this is a good thing for the city. Um, when we talked about the Sun Glow and those apartments, there's some more commercial where Beeler's property goes back, that's all commercial behind that. So as much as they complain about this happening here, they could end up with neighbors right behind them and out their back door with commercial buildings.
They're there right now.
That's my point, my point, exactly. When the city planned all this years and years ago, they took Leo Kid, okay? They took it. I've got houses that are built in the fifties, two of my houses are built in the fifties on Sun Glow. They started putting the residential in there, and it failed. They said, "Let's go commercial." They went down Leo Kid, and they went nuts. All that is after, the houses and apartments.
Excuse me, we're not talking about Leo Kid, we're talking about...
I am, because that's where my business is gonna be. Leo Kid.
I, I find it interesting how you arrived at your spot zoning fundamental definition, but it really doesn't matter, because, uh...
Spot zoning would definitely be the roofing company, I would go along with that.
Okay.
Three sides, three sides residential.
That, uh, I think this has probably been enough, do you, anybody have any other questions? So if I restate it, your position is that it's already commercial in general, and Mr. Muse is saying the master plan would've galled, or should've galled?
Well, let me put it to you this way. If you take Leo Kid, and you say, okay, and you, and you say no to it all, that'll be the only piece of property that is not commercial on Leo Kid. Keep that in mind, okay? So, there is three parcels in front of you. Keep that in mind as well. I'm, I'm here on three parcels, I paid for three rezonings. You're, so when you approve this, it's not just a one, there's three here.
Quick question, you said you were gonna fence this in?
We can absolutely do that. I'll do, I'll, if you guys want it fenced in, we'll fence it in, you tell me. I, I'd like it fenced in, I don't want people in there. I'm also gonna put up security cameras, and, uh, we're gonna landscape, it's gonna look nice.
I would think you would want it fenced in, considering your attitude about the crime in the area.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why my other business is fenced in.
Okay, and that may be something you wanna, uh, put as an additive to that?
Mr. Mayor, um...
Just remember, though, with fencing, uh, we also have to have parking lots, so, uh, the, you know, this isn't, like, this is just, once we get the approval, you still have to approve the drawings and everything else.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why would you hire an engineer to do a site plan for a parcel that you don't have zoning on yet?
Because I'm...
I happen to be an architect, okay?
Yeah, okay.
And I know how this works, why would you go to the expense to do that?
Because I needed no flood elevations, I needed no costs.
No, you, no, you didn't.
Okay, now you're telling me what I don't need to know? You've done this before?
You may do it on coast, but the cost, but you didn't need no flood elevation, see, I mean, that's just, you can call us and ask us for that, you didn't have to hire an engineer for that.
What, what, what's this?
I'd like to ask, uh...
I feel like I'm being personally attacked here.
I read a report from the police department, or an opinion.
Councilman Bloom.
I'm just trying to invest in the city, that's all, guys. It's just nothing more than what I've already done, more of the same.
Okay, but right now, we're deciding if what you've done is valid, and I've got Mr. Bloom on the floor.
Yes, um, I, I, through the, um, the agenda that was on for tonight, there's, I, I believe there was an opinion by, from the police, uh, department here, is, do we wanna hear from them on that?
You could ask, if you're asking my opinion...
You can, you can ask...
I'm asking the mayor, I mean, could, could he, could he, uh, direct that, uh, inquiry into, from the police department on, on what their opinion is, uh, with this, um, Mr. St. John's, uh...
Have you seen your opinion in here, 'cause I...
That's DeCanyio's opinion.
Okay, okay, do you have anything you can, uh, comment on that?
Uh, again, just looking over what Chief DeCanyio put in here, I, I believe his primary concern was, was in fact the children in the area, um, and again, I think that's been addressed and hashed out half a dozen times. Um, in brief speaking with him, that, that was, that was my understanding of what his concerns were.
Okay, so the major thing is children and the traffic?
That's the only thing that I recall in our conversation, uh, him speaking up.
That puts you back where I was saying, what could you do if you were living there that would make it less dangerous in their minds, whether it is actuality or not? Uh, fences, uh, I don't know, gentlemen?
It's, it's not going to change what's already there for me, because I'm just moving from one end of the street to the other, and I'm not going anywhere. This is where I'm going to be the rest of my career, okay? This is, this is my end game here, for that building. Um, I run a good business, and, um, and I just, I, I need a spot, and, uh, I'm really hoping you guys, um, look at it in the big picture.
Uh, Bill, were this, um, granted, are there any things you can think that might be imposed that would make the residents, uh, comfortable, that Mr. St. Martin might, uh, offer?
There's zoning issues, that has to be met, of course, but no, no, uh...
Nothing in extras?
Shouldn't, shouldn't happen.
Huh?
Shouldn't happen.
Um, where do we go from here?
As a housing matter, could you rule on accepting the plan?
Okay, um, we can rule, I, I'll just rule, I'm gonna accept those from Mr. St. Martin, and, uh...
You can bring it back to the council, discussion in a moment.
We'll, we'll bring it to council, all right? Gentlemen, you're on board.
A quick question, uh, to the city manager, we just paved Leo Kid not long ago.
Yes, sir.
When we paved that road, did we pave it with the expectations of it, that area being heavy industrial?
Uh, we're not even done paying, uh, the rest of that section out there, and the, there was a, a standard, um, uh, resurfacing that met with all of requirements for resurfacing, nothing extra, nothing less, so it met all the requirements of standard street, uh, repairs, sir.
Well, I concerns, uh, as much as Mr. St. John wants to expand his business, build those buildings there, we are affecting someone that has property there already. I just want council to know that, because this gentleman has these properties, he has rented those properties. The shootings and such, I consider that to be a police matter, as it would be anywhere in the city, and that is to be handled by the police department, and the owner of the property, to clean it up, make sure the tenants he's going to put in there are of a higher co- uh, higher, uh...
Awareness.
Caliber, so that they are not going to run into these problems. That, that's something you do there, that has nothing to do with whether the property should be, shouldn't be rezoned or not. I know we went through there at the Christmas parade with fire trucks, the children were out at the curbside, lots of them, so I know it is, and has been, an area for children. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Bloom, Dr. Moore.
I, I agree with, uh, with Terry about, uh, criminal activity being a police matter, and bringing in a, an industrial building or complex is, I don't think is gonna change that. I, I think the, the owner of the duplexes, or how many plexes he may have, probably needs to do things differently, but in, in terms of acquiring his tenants, um, and my concern is, is when do you stop? Uh, you know, you've gone so far, and, and then you just keep going and going and going, or do you say, "Hey, enough is enough," and you keep a residential area a residential area? Um, and, and that's the difficulty here, you have children, the safe, there's nothing more important than the safety of children, and I don't know that that will change much, um, with, uh, with the businesses in place, but it's something that needs to be considered.
Okay, sir, would you come up?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, say, do you need to say his name again?
Andre Cash, with a K.
Okay, um, I'm trying to make some kind of, uh, middle ground here. What are your major objections to this project?
I think it's a major unknown for me what my marketing efforts would be. We were able to increase, as you referred to that caliber of tenants, but it's simply prudent background procedures, and the tenants that live there are good, good families with kids, so, we, in conjunction with that, we were able to increase our rents from a low six hundreds to over seven hundred bucks, and it's still relatively affordable. I don't know what impact that would have when I bring new tenants. Right now, they say it's a nice, quiet residential street, and when subject property is redeveloped, what my marketing efforts and abilities to keep up with inflation, and ability to recoup my investment, which we paid top dollars for, will be. That's great and known, and I tend to agree with Mr. Muse, that it was residential, let it be residential.
Okay, and there's nothing, if this were approved, there's no, um, apartments, as you might...
I don't see any middle grounds, sir. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know who to direct this to, so I'm sorry. I'll just put it out there. Two, three, four. I see that Mr. Cash owns one, two, three, four lots with buildings on it. Well, who owns all the rest of them, which are also multi-homes and you're not, you don't know who your neighbors are?
I don't know either one of them.
So.
Wasn't important enough for them to show up?
They're not objecting.
They're not objecting?
They'd show up.
Maybe they couldn't be.
Mr. St. John, Martin? I'm sorry, St. John. Okay, you said that you own two rental buildings there that you redid yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that fifty-eight forty-five?
No.
Which ones are you, the two that you own?
Fifty-eight hundred and fifty-seven forty-four, and they are directly behind my office building.
Oh, okay, they're on, they're not in.
So I own approximately.
They're further down the street.
I own approximately two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet from Washington down Sun Glow.
Okay, I see, I see. It's not in my green area.
Not much different than what I'm trying to do at the opposite end of the street.
But I see that it's not in my green area, so I was trying to put where.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't meet the footage for the rezoning.
And you're actually on Washington Street?
The business itself is on Washington Street, just like my business will be on Leo Kid.
I'm trying to get this map in my head. So you're gonna go from one end of the street to the other? And you still use the street as a thorough way to get from one place to another?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're really not changing the traffic anymore?
All the air conditioning distributors are back in that area. Everything is within a one-mile radius for all the brand, the products that I sell and the materials that I buy. They're all right in that area, either in, all in commercial stuff, right in that area. Right off of Congress, there's Orchid Lake, and then there's on Pine Hill itself, there's a metal shop in there, commercial.
And you're going to use one of those buildings for yourself?
The biggest one.
So it would be, well, no, in the storage. You said you were gonna store in the other one.
Yes, but predominantly the seventh one.
The other one.
That is correct.
So the only question is in the increase, the increase in traffic would be in that third building? Because otherwise, they'd just be using.
Yeah, and it's, it's only got, it's only got a two garage bay and only four parking spots.
Six parking spots.
It's not for retail, so it's not going, again, it's not going to be something like that, you know? It's going to be a contractor, most likely, or, you know, a sprinkler company, a plumbing, you know, something like that. Just similar to what's right behind it on Dashar.
A fairly small one, apparently.
Of course, because it's a smaller building, and there's not much parking.
So that building would increase the traffic, otherwise you're not making any difference in the traffic moving from one end to the other?
Correct. It's, nothing's gonna change for us.
Will your semi trucks still have to come down Sun Glow?
That is correct. They already do.
They already do?
They come from Progressive Air on Dashar Court, they come up Sun Glow, they pull up to Washington Street, and then they back in to my office now.
Would there, is there backup room for them to do this here?
Yes. If you, I mean, I could come over and show you, or if you look at it, the first driveway in on Sun Glow, they'd be backing in right there.
Oh, okay, I see.
They're fourteen-foot garage doors. These new metal buildings have come a long way. They meet the hundred and seventy mile an hour wind code, storm. They have different colors. I'm planning a facade on the front, so with a roof and a stucco to really dress it up, so it's not just a plain old metal building. And the other two, the fronts actually face each other, so there really is no front on those two. They're more of a warehouse.
How is this hard ground gonna affect flooding and drainage?
The drainage is, one of the reasons I brought the civil engineer in, to make sure I could afford a lot of what's gonna have to happen there. That is the flood zone there, so that all gets taken care of. I become responsible for that. And then it all has to be approved through Swift Mud.
So you're gonna be digging out this entire area back here for the proposed pond?
Well, if you look at the overhead on the green, the main drainage for that entire area is already behind that property between the metal buildings. It goes all the way through, up in front of Bay Boulevard, and then right where Bay Dermatology is, it cuts under nineteen and goes through, through there. And we are not allowed to tie in that. Our drainage is our own drainage.
So where's it gonna go?
We build retention areas.
Oh, in the retention.
Just like my, if you look at my Washington Street, and you ever seen that, I have a retention pond there as well. I have to catch my own storm water, and we would be responsible for that. That is all, that is all things you will never have to worry about, because he's gotta approve that, Swift Mud. I mean, there's a lot of hurdles for all that stuff. That's.
Would that be an aid to the houses across the street?
I wouldn't think so. That street doesn't flood. It's, I've researched that property pretty well. That property doesn't flood, that street doesn't flood. Down towards my end at Washington Street, there is an area that floods, not like floods houses or anything, but it holds water for a couple days after a massive, I mean, it takes four days of rain to actually create a problem. So that street's pretty good. Like I said, I've been there since two thousand, so.
I have another question. It's probably for Jim, though. Right now, there's the two pieces of property that are Duke Energy. You have the one large lot, sixty-one oh one. And then you have the lot number nineteen C three. I think they're both.
They're both Duke.
Both Duke Energy.
Which two lots?
I'm sorry, it's lot nineteen C three is zoned, and then behind it is the big Duke Energy lot.
I'm familiar with those, yes.
As you were saying before, since there's a zone C three currently, if Duke Energy ever sells either one of these parcels.
They won't sell that. There's a substation.
Anything, like Mr. Muse was saying, could be done on those pieces of property, anything, unless it was some strict drawn-up area that we're talking about, like for this gentleman here.
In answer to your question.
Not that they are, I'm just saying.
I understand hypothetical question, and I understand why you're asking. Presuming that no rezoning's been there, and I have no reason to believe that it was, C three on those lots, if that's what they are, can do anything in the C three zoning, yes.
Which is on Sun Glow? And Leo Kid?
Yeah, wherever there's C three, they could do anything in C three, right? There's no use restrictions, because it wasn't rezoned.
No use restrictions on the ones that are currently.
Of accepted uses in C three.
Unless the parameters were drawn up.
Like nineteen, and if the transmission things with that, yes, theoretically, that's how it works, right?
Right, okay.
It kinda makes my point, which I'd like to emphasize from before.
That's exactly.
Is, you know, getting back to my initial comment that I'm not sure everybody understands is, the request is to go C three, okay? And then for the next thousand years, just for what you're asking, that could happen, unless you put conditions on it.
Which is the caveat for the light industrial.
Which is the light industrial, not only light industrial, but it has to be storage.
And all inside.
Yeah, that was discussed at length at the planning and zoning meeting. I'd get you whatever it says.
My point I was trying to make is that piece of property theoretically could be used for anything currently.
No, I understand why you asked, and I appreciate it, because I want all the council members to understand that.
Okay, I didn't understand. It's your last.
My point I was trying to make is there currently is a C three at the corner of Sun Glow and Leo Kid. It happens to be owned by Duke Energy, but that's not the point I'm trying to make. The point is, once that zones C three, people could put anything there. That's the point I'm trying to make, is this gentleman narrowly scoped his business, and we write that up. It'd be light industrial storage and everything done inside. Right now, if that piece of property was sold, they could put up an amusement park.
So you're saying the restrictions.
I'm just saying, right. With the right restrictions, I don't see, but I'm just saying, right next to it is one that is totally unrestricted.
Yeah.
So keep it in mind.
We could have strip bars there.
Well, that's my point.
Well, I believe it does not. It has to be industrial. It has to be light industrial, which is the next step above C three, and that's where, over there on Orchid Lake Drive, what's that place? That is the zoning for that. You can't, to answer the reverence question and stuff, you can't do that on C three. It's not gonna happen. It can't happen.
My point was, it's not narrowly scoped, so you don't know what would end up being there.
Yeah, on Dukes, yes, ma'am.
So, I guess I'll let anyone, go ahead. I'm gonna let anyone else that'd like to speak to this come up. And then we're gonna bring it to council. You can stay here, John. Did you have questions, man?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I mean, your interest is to upgrade your industrial facility, whatever. Why can't you just upgrade where you're at right now? And why does it have to be exactly at that property that, right in front of where we live?
The property is too small. Hello, 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 hello. Hello. So that property that I'm at currently now, I have no more, I've already added on. I can't add on anymore. I'm out of property. So that's out of the question, and I've already had a heavy investment on this property, so.
And another thing, you said you had six parking spaces, but you have eleven vans. So where are the other parking spaces gonna be?
Six is on the five thousand square foot buildings. Mine has seventeen parking spots.
Are you, did he say that's a question?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Five one one three Mallet Drive, Matthew Todd. Where I live at, there's restaurants, semis coming in and out, they're making deliveries. We have our city trucks coming in, picking up stuff. And I'm sure these gentlemen that are in business, because myself being in business, you have commercial insurance, and all due respects to them people. Last thing that man, or any of these business owners are gonna do, is let their drivers run over, hit one of them kids, and kill one of their kids because they're insurance. If they knew what the premiums are that these gentlemen pay for insurance, it's outrageous, and they're not gonna let anything like that happen. And we need the revenue. This man's gonna permanently put something in here, dedicating his future here? To me, guys, it's a no-brainer. Please move forward with this. Thank you.
Anyone else before I close it down?
Ron St. Martin again. Most of us understand residential as a place where you live. Now, Mr. Cash and the most of the people on Sun Glow there that own duplexes bought strictly as a business. They don't live there and rent out a bedroom to help support themselves. It's strictly a business. They're all about generating income. That's all.
Okay, let's bring it to council. Okay, gentlemen, this is not an easy decision. I would accept a motion for discussion, and then we can vote if you will.
I do have a question, then. Are we, are we voting on the motion to approve at this point, or bring back to council? How, I don't, this is the first time I've ever done one of these.
The mayor's looking for a motion, either to, your motion could be to accept the recommendation. Right now, there's a recommendation for the planning and zoning board before you, so your motion could be, I accept the, you know, we approve the recommendation.
Their recommendation is to change with the caveats of light industrial.
Right.
Right.
Or you say, I move to deny. I mean, that's pretty much, I don't, presumably it's not other provisos you wanna put in, from what I've heard. So you're either gonna move to accept the recommendation or deny it.
Right.
I would.
Unless you wanna put some other provisos.
I would like to have a motion for discussion, and then.
Yeah, you'll need a motion one way or the other for discussion.
One or the other.
Well, we can make a motion for discussion, but I don't understand.
No, motion to accept or reject for discussion.
Oh.
You can hash it out. You may wanna put more restrictions on.
Let me just make one statement here. You can have discussion, Mr. Mayor, on either a motion to approve or a motion to deny. I just want to emphasize that, this problem at the P and Z meeting. If you make a motion to approve it, you can't argue against it.
Right.
Okay? Can't even discuss against it, okay? You can second for discussion only, but if you make a motion for it, you can't argue against it or discuss against it, and vice versa.
If they make a motion for it or against it, can they add more restrictions to?
When you say more conditions, you'd have to call the applicant up to see if he'd accept those conditions. You can't ram the zoning down his throat, you understand what I mean? You could discuss it, so somebody's gotta put a motion on it.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept with the caveats that we have in place.
So a motion to accept the P and Z, that's the motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I guess it fails for lack of a second.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Stalemate. Can I leave?
You can't leave, but if you don't get a second for it, then the proposition fails.
I'm sorry.
Proposition fails without a motion approved. If you don't get a second on either motion, we're done here today.
Well, we're done, then, I assume. I'm sorry?
It's up to you. You can't get a motion to approve, and you can't get a second for that, and you can't get a second for the motion to deny, so, you know.
Before you finish that off, can you, one more thing?
It's up to you.
No, we're closed. No, we're done.
No, I'm sorry. What is, what are my choices?
You have no other choice. You gotta get a motion on the table to approve or deny it. If either one, we're done, and it's not approved.
Unless anyone wants to speak up with a second, I think this is over.
Is our discussion over among us?
I'm sorry?
Is discussion over?
You can have discussion.
We can discuss if you want to, but if we don't have a motion and a second, we're just discussing what we've discussed.
It's up to you if you wanna continue discussion.
I see no movement here. I suppose, at this point, Jim, at this point, I'm just gonna have to call this disapproved.
Well, you have to call it anything. It's not disapproved. Not disapproved or approved, but.
Okay, gentlemen, ladies, the proposition does not go forward, for lack of a second, on either of the motions. So I assume we're done. Okay, do we have anything else, gentlemen?
Yes, counsel, if I may. There will be a workshop, it's a workshop agenda that we passed out tomorrow, tomorrow, April twenty-fifth, at six PM at the West Pasco Government Center Boardroom, first floor. Eighty-seven thirty-one Citizens Drive, Newport, Ritchie, Florida. And this will be a workshop with the county commission, with the county administrator, the county attorney, and of course, the city of Newport Ritchie, and the city of Port Ritchie, where we'll make a presentation. I would sincerely remind those council members who are going to attend, again, that it's important that we be there at six PM tomorrow. One other, one other issue that was brought up by most of the individuals here in the audience, that Sun Glow is a problem for this community. I will be tasking our police department to increase their patrols on Sun Glow with respect to. with respect to all of those issues that may be in contradiction.